I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Cobal.
Here.
Ms. Peppler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zooker.
Here.
All right, first, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of April 7th and the special board meeting of April 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections, additions? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zooker.
Yes.
We are doing the awards and recognitions before the statements from the audience. Okay. So superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to recognize a group of students who had the pledge of working with very closely this year. In October, I put together a student cadre, and it's a group consisting of sixteen members from grades nine to twelve. And each month, we work together, and the students provide me with insights on what it's like to be a student at Heights High, and what are some of the experiences and improvements that I can help them do throughout the year. So they submit and choose all of the agenda items, and then each month, we sit and decide of what recourse to take. And I think what was the most amazing thing about the event, the first meeting, we had thirty agenda items. And I said, oh, boy. By our third meeting, I think we had really, I checked everything off, and I stated to the students that it wasn't about me fixing anything for them, but it was about me empowering them to change the things that they believed should be changed. So I want to recognize them tonight to say thank you for helping me throughout this first year. We have one more meeting next month that we're going to go, and they cannot tell anybody where we're going. And then we kind of see what will happen next year. So tonight, I want to recognize all of those students. So when I call your name, please come to the front. And for President Nancy Peppler, we'll give you a certificate, and then we'll take a group photo. So I hope everyone is here. So when you want to call your name, come on up. So Severon Ankarak, please come up. Akash Bartlett. Angelique Hale. Dejante Hoesley. Jessa Lambert. Emma Ruth. Emily Vincent. Sidney Watson. Emma Jordan, I'm sorry, Emma Zorden. Jordan Nash. Flannery Jewell. Erin Bernard. Alexandra Harper. Imani Smith. Kimberly Thomas. And I would like to say, the students, they filled an applicant, they completed an application, and they had to actually have a letter submitted, a permission slip from their parents. So it was a process. So they, you got that? Okay. And so it was interesting, every month, meeting with them and getting their advice and just, and giving them information. And we set up group norms the first time, and one of them was, okay, these have to be your agenda items and not the teachers', so please do not allow the teachers to give you items because you're meeting with me every month. So that was kind of a funny couple of meetings we had. And they came up with all of these lists, and I said, where did you guys get these items from? Are your teachers giving you items to bring to this monthly meeting? But again, thank you all. You've been absolutely fabulous. Even Emily Vincent wants to be a superintendent, and she shadowed me last week. So that was a great experience, just kind of having her with me for the day. But thank you all, and I look forward to some more leadership opportunities. So here's our future. Just give them a hand. Okay, now along with the cadre.
One second.
One more second.
Yeah, for those of you I didn't catch on your way out, if you go over and meet Arida Walker, she has a gift bag for each of you.
Yes.
Sorry, I was, I didn't catch you on your way back to the seat. Thanks.
So along with the cadre, there are a few other young students who are already demonstrating their abilities as change makers. So Justine Redd and Michael Seaman, please come to the front and receive your certificates of courage. So you may recall, fourth grader, Garrity fourth graders, Justine and Lily Johnson, they were, and Lily could not be with us tonight, but they were honored in January for winning a poem for the Martin Luther King Junior Day. So Lily and Justine wrote a poem, and they shared that poem with us at the board meeting. Well, these two young ladies had something else on their mind that night, because after the board meeting, they decided to come to the podium and said, Superintendent Dixon, we would like to talk to you about school lunch. So after that meeting. So a few days later, I decided to have lunch with Lily and Justine to actually try the lunch out myself. And it was so funny during, we both, we all three got our trays, and we sat down, and they said, Superintendent Dixon, you go first. And I said, and they watched as I ate my lunch. So, but they really wanted me to see, and I think it was Justin, who said, you know what, Superintendent Dixon, every student deserves to have a quality meal. So I asked them that they would like to meet with, one of the directors, with Chartwell. So Chartwell actually met with Justine and Lily to kind of get some advice on our school lunches, and there are going to be some changes based on those decisions and feedback to Justine and her colleagues. So next, I went to Boulevard Elementary to meet with the teacher, Katie Mark, is Katie here? She's not here. So I went to meet with her regarding a study that she was doing. So while we were meeting, there was some, she kept looking behind her, and I said, what's going on? So there was a little student sticking his head around a corner, and it was Michael. Michael had asked the teacher, while she's here, can I please just meet with her just a few minutes? I just want to share something with her. So he came up, and he sat down at the table, and he was very concerned about the students crossing Lee Road. And he said, we need a crossing guard. Superintendent Dixon, it's not safe, and we need a crossing guard, and I really want our students to cross that intersection of Somerton and Lee Road safely. So I was so impressed with his courage, I next set up a meeting with our facilities, assistant facilities director, business director, Mr. Peckett, who met with Michael. They then went and met with someone from the city, the city safety director, and because of his courage, they're now planning to install a crosswalk there this summer. So these two students, the three, where we're talking about students having the courage to say to their superintendent, we want to see change, and then we're answering that call, and including them in the process, I think is remarkable. So thank you, and you have the support of their principals, with Ms. Polis, she's here, wave, there. And Garrity's principal could not be here tonight, but awesome, you guys are wonderful. So I want to say thank you, and we'll take a picture with your certificates. Okay, last, but really not last. We're here tonight to recognize and celebrate our dedicated staff throughout the district who have achieved tenure, are continuing contract status. Here with us tonight to recognize the staff members is Paul Lombardo, Director of Human Resources. Paul, I hand this significant recognition over to you. All right, Mr. Lombardo.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Peppler, members of the school board. Dr. Dixon, Mr. Gainer, staff and friends, thanks for being here. It's my pleasure this evening, it's to introduce teachers from our district whom are recommended to the Board of Education for their completion of requirements towards tenure. In order to be eligible for tenure, they must have a master's degree or thirty graduate hours beyond the bachelor's degree, must have three years' experience in the district or two years in a previous district, also receiving tenure in a previous district. And they also must have a professional teaching license or permanent certificate. Before I introduce these staff members, I want to thank people who have contributed to this part of the program. Kathan, in our communications department, she did all the programs and the certificates. Bonnie Merritt from Mayor Cater's, they did the food and refreshments, and we hope afterwards you will please finish up the food, it was delicious. And Kim Ehrlich, from our HR, confidential administrative assistant, who organized this event, is Kim still here? There's Kim right there, thank you, Kim, for all you do. The program, as you see, there's thirty-five staff members who achieved this certificate. We will announce those that have been able to join us tonight, and I would ask President Peppler and Dr. Dixon if you could hand out the certificates. And I do have them here. Please hold your applause to the very end, and then we will recognize all of them. They are in order there. Our first teacher, Peter Dorjan, Roxborough Middle School, he teaches middle school science, joined the district in 2012, received his Bachelor of Science from Cleveland State University and Master of Education from Jones International University. Nadine Davis, Canterbury Elementary School and Garrity Professional Development School, is ELA support, joined the district in 2012. Bachelor of Science, Youngstown State University, and Master of Education, Edinburgh University. Tony Delillo is here, Roxborough Elementary, third grade teacher, joined the district in 2009. Bachelor of Arts, Notre Dame, and Master of Education, Notre Dame. Lisa Evans is here, Garrity Professional Development School, is a kindergarten teacher, joined the district in 2006, have a Bachelor of Arts, Bowling Green State University. Jennifer Fuji is here, Notre, excuse me, Noble Elementary, Simon Kindergarten, joined the district in 2012. Bachelor of Science, Bowling Green State University. Heron Hartig, from Garrity Preschool, early preschool education, joined the district in 2012, received a Bachelor of Arts, Colorado State University, and Master of Arts, University of Phoenix. Anna Kiss is with us, from Delisle Option Center, she does career tech, education, and pharmacy, joined the district in 2004, Bachelor of Science from Cleveland State University. Takara Ray is here, Noble Elementary, third grade teacher, joined the district in 2012, Bachelor of Science from the Ohio State University, Master of Arts, Cleveland State University, and Master of Education, Notre Dame College. Linda Rudy, Roxborough Middle School, school nurse, joined the district in 2002, Bachelor of Science, Ursuline College, and Master of Education, Cambridge College of Boston. Margaret Sivakov, Boulevard Elementary School Nurse, joined the district in 1994, Bachelor of Science, University of Phoenix, Master of Education, Cambridge College. Elizabeth Spalding, are you with us? Yes. From Cleveland Heights High School, intervention specialist, joined the district in 2010, Bachelor of Science, University of Akron, Master of Education, Cleveland State University. Jessica Valentino, Noble Elementary, Spanish teacher, joined the district in 2011, Master, Bachelor of Science, Miami University, Master of Education, Duquesne University. Danielle V., Noble Preschool, early childhood education teacher, joined the district in 2012, Bachelor of Arts, John Carroll University, Master of Education, University of Washington. Julie Walker, Boulevard Elementary, third grade teacher, joined the district 2012, Bachelor of Arts, University of Hawaii, and Master of Arts, Ursuline College. Megan Wheeler, Roxborough Middle School, a middle school ELA sixth grade teacher, joined the district in 2012, Bachelor of Arts, Boeing Green State University, Master of Education, John Carroll University. And Courtney White, Cleveland Heights High School, English teacher, joined the district in 2012, Bachelor of Arts, University of Akron, Master of Science, University of Akron. We can get everyone a round of applause.
Good suggestion.
Do we want to say it? Okay. All right, so we are going to move forward in the agenda. If any of you particularly students feel like you need to leave before we go forward with the agenda, you're welcome to with that, and it won't upset us. Thank you for coming. And the teachers, right? Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming. All right, next, we have a presentation on facilities. Are you going to kick things off, or is Gary just going to come up?
Gary's just going to come up.
Okay. Gary and John.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening. We're just going to do a brief review of where we're currently at. I think the last time we were here, we went over in a Broadway where we're, where we're at in the project. We're currently completing our design development phase, and so tonight, we're just going to do a brief review of the floor plans of the building, and some of the minor changes that have occurred recently in the last month. Thank you. John?
So as we all know, we've been working with, with the district for about a year and a half now. We went through programming, schematic design, and design development, and just for everybody in the office, each phase gets more developed. What we're going to do now is review, review the floor plans. I know a lot of you have seen them. Up until this point, the floor plan is, is, tends to be somewhat fluid. There are modifications that are being made up to this point, and there are still a few minor modifications that will be made. We have the building broken down into certain areas. We start with Washington level. Washington level is called that because of Washington Street, which is to the top of the presentation here. And that's where you currently enter the building now, which is right around this location here. And then you go in, you go down and up and down and up, which would eventually lead you to Social Hall that we're in. On, on Washington level, we have major spaces. We basically have two programs. We have the tan, which is PE, and then we have the purple, which is CTE. In regards to this floor, a lot of the floor is taken up by major PE spaces, which includes the competition gym, the natatorium, or the pool, and the main, the auxiliary gym. In regards to career tech, this floor also has physical, or exercise science and cosmetology and criminal justice, as well as engineering tech. The rest of this floor is associated with those programs, as well as some of the PE programs. This area right here is for cardio and health, health classrooms, and then there's locker rooms, locker spaces associated with the gym. Cedar level is, is, is the main level of the building that you enter onto right now. And just so everybody knows, we can see what cedar level is, it's these doors that we have up here. That's the level of cedar, that's where everything will be on that level, on this floor that you see. What we have is, we start to see the development of the plan in regards to how the building will function. We've talked a lot with Cleveland Heights High School, as well as the district, about how students enter the building, because it becomes really important. What we did was, we maintained the original corridor that was, that was there, that's outside of those steps. So that's sort of a sense of memory that everybody will have within the building. A lot of the students will be entering along the east side of the building, which is just outside these, these doors at the top. This floor is, is, a lot of this floor is dedicated to assembly spaces, as well as a few programs of academic teaching spaces. When you enter the, to the, to the south of the building, we see the administration area, which would include the principal's office, as well as a conferencing center. As we proceed down the hallway, we have access to major spaces. Where we're sitting right now will become the media center location, and then where the cafeteria now is, once again, going to be the cafeteria. And then behind the cafeteria, of course, is the kitchen space. Everything on this floor centered around the auditorium space. The auditorium is going to be renovated, and there's going to be a few additional things that are added to make the, the use of the space easier in regards to production, as well as in regards to education. As you proceed down the hallway, we start to see some development of some CTE spaces. This is your marketing and business, this is sound and audio. When you come to the west side of the building, the area in pink is special education. As we proceed down each side of the auditorium, it'll be very similar to what you have now, except we won't have the ramps. We have a whole wing dedicated to music. So this space right here would be the orchestra room, there's a band room, a jazz room, and then other associated functions with that. There's some ensemble rooms and practice rooms and music library. Here, if you proceed. When we go up to the second floor, which is it's current, currently the second floor, you know, what we tried to do was have some sort of a sense of memory again with the use of the existing stairways. We're able to open them up, so the doors aren't there, so that you could freely go up and down. What this also does, what it, it allowed all of the academic core spaces to be located on the second and third floors, for the most part. So as we can see here, the, this, this blue color is what we call academic core, which is reading, math, English, language. Then we have the green, which is the science wings. And then, once again, we have CTE. This is pharmacy, and this is clinical health. So we were able to incorporate them. A minor change that has happened is, there was a reduction of some classroom spaces in this, based on discussions with the district, as well as looking at the program and what the school actually needed. And if everybody remembers, there was a time when some of the CTE programs were located in Delisle, we were able to incorporate those programs back into the high school. When we go to the third floor, the third floor is very similar to the second floor in regards to the south half of the building, which once again allows everybody to understand what's going on. You always have this corridor, so you always sort of know where you are. In regards to this floor, the one thing that, that is different is the existing freshman experience, or the old library, for those of you that went to school here. If you went to school here when there was a cafeteria, everybody sort of remembers or been, has been in this space. This becomes art, along with another, another program there. Once again, this allows science to be incorporated with other academic core spaces. The other thing that's happening on each of these floors is, we were able to stack all of the lockers in the central tower, so there's always, there's always a reference point. Most of the lockers are located here, which is central to the building. Also, on each floor is some sort of administration and guidance. On the fourth floor, which is currently vocal, it's remaining that program. So vocals, once again, staying on the fourth floor. With that, we were able to incorporate a new elevator to get up there, as well as additional ensemble rooms and practice rooms, and an office, and a small music library. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
Are we doing heavy-duty questions, or, I mean?
Whatever you would like.
Well, I know, because I, from reviewing the PDFs, I've got a bunch of little questions. I don't necessarily have to answer them this evening, but I know we're talking about transparency, it's, if we're having to, can I, you know?
Go ahead.
Okay. If you can go back to the Washington level? And I have a pointer, so I, hopefully I won't wind Eric with it. The, maybe it won't work, nevermind.
What are you trying to point to there?
Oh, the, that door there, yes.
Yes.
In the, I know we were, originally was very, very dramatic, now we've thinned it down. I think now we have it just as one door. I know, I think it's primarily going to be used as more of an emergency exit, as an entrance. I think it's now going a little too, I think we should still stick with the two doors, because the one door, if in the future we wanted to use as an entrance, so I think it should have a little bit more.
A little more.
A little more, just two doors as opposed to one. The, the bleachers in the auxiliary gym, you're showing them the PDF, I believe that wasn't, are we putting that in the, is that going to be?
That's still under discussion, we were talking about those.
Okay.
So we think that they're no longer there.
Let's see. The, again, a little detail, but the, the two sort of aerobics, or the cardio rooms, the one on the left has doors that are right across from the lobby for the, the entrance to the natatorium. If we can make it a mirror of its other room, that would give us more of a lobby space, was the thought.
Lobby space for the pool?
Exactly. Let's see, also, now it appears that we now have a set of inner doors towards the entrance to the competition gym and natatorium, which sort of.
These?
Yeah, is it, previously, I didn't see that sort of internal door, sort of a foyer, that seems to create a little bit of a choke point with the main entrance to the competition gym, to that hallway. I wasn't sure if that is by code, do we have to have that, or?
We have an, we have a, an airlock.
Okay.
So, and you would want the airlock.
Okay.
Because it would, you know, you'd lose a lot of conditioned air.
Okay. And then the, just from an operational standpoint, the visitors locker room we have, is that going to be big enough for, is that more, intended more for track and field and swim as opposed to football? Because it seems a little small for.
It's visitors for the field, as well as for the pool. It could be, it depends on how the school wants to use it in regards to basketball, because basketball has, you know, there's a team locker room here, then there's other locker rooms associated with this gym. this gymnasium, and then there's small locker rooms associated with the auxiliary gym. These are, these locker rooms, I, I believe are for PE classes. And then these are, they could be used for some sort of PE classes, as well as for the basketball team. So if, for instance, you have your team here, you can use this as basketball also, or volleyball, depending on that.
So theoretically, it should be more than enough for everyone. Football, it may be a little tight, but for everyone else-
Football would be a little tight, yeah. But if you're, if you're talking basketball, volleyball, it could be utilized for, for that, as well as for both sexes.
Um, on the, if we go to the Cedar level, um, we don't have the, just the, in, in the library space, I don't know if it's visible here, we've got sort of a couple of col, there's like three columns, just sort of in the middle of the space. If we could either move the column, or move the wall, so that it-
Those, those columns Eric's talking about are, are, are right along this wall right here.
Just from a, from a, because it'd be nicer if it was, it was either in the wall or moved a tad. Also, just from curiosity, the wall between the cafeteria and the library, unless those spaces are two stories high, I was just curious what-
There's a glass wall there.
Okay, that was, that was what the building material was. The gray space in between the cafeteria and the library, that, to the right, on the exterior wall.
The gray space between the cafeteria and the library.
That, is that an ex, is that to allow us access from the library and the cafeteria to the plaza?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. And we created another airlock there.
Gotcha.
Because it's not going to be used all the time, but it allows both programs to use it.
Good. Then the, in the mini auditorium, it's probably very difficult to see here, you've got the, in the northwest corner, there's a, like a storage closet.
Yeah, that, that actually is, that was a mechanical closet, but when we started to look at the design of the space, we actually were able to relocate that.
Okay. That was, I was wondering if we could have access from the mini auditorium to the library, because then that would allow, I can see a lot of pro, a lot of cross-program opportunities between the two spaces.
When, when we relocated that, that mechanical unit, we were able to, we are able to provide access from this space into the, into the media center.
That's great.
Then-
And that's how all of these, these rooms right here work, because these are associated not only with the media center, but also with how the school is going to function.
Um, let's see. We, I guess it would be pretty much for, oh, the, it's, it's not really shown in the illustration, but the, curious is how we're going to be, I believe we still have to have ADA access from the auditorium, base of the auditorium up to the stage. I'd be curious to see how we're going to be addressing that from a-
This-
Well, yeah, going from the ba, from the, if I'm in the auditorium, at the bottom of the auditorium, right in front of the stage, I believe we have to have ADA access to-
Yeah, you do. And, and, and what we did in the plan was, we developed, there's two levels of circulation going on here. One is a ramp, adjacent to the existing wall that's there.
Gotcha.
The ramp that we have there now is inaccessible, as we all know.
Right.
And so what we did was, we brought an accessible ramp down to the two doors that are at the face of the stage. And then we have a series of steps that go up. We did that on both sides. Then the other thing that you can't see here is, there is a lift back here that would bring you from Cedar level down to stage level, to get to, to have an accessible entrance to the stage.
So we're going to be able to have ADA access, as well as we're maintaining the, all the detail that we-
Yeah, and that's why we, that's why we introduced the ramps, and then the lift back here, so that we can maintain-
Gotcha.
-the integrity of the 1926 architecture.
The, let's see. Now, I know we're supposed to be keeping the banisters and boustlers in the 26 stairwells. I'd be curious to see what we're doing from a, for the design of the new stairwells, in particular the ones in the, in the 26 ramp. On the first floor, we have a, next to the special education classes, we have a red set of offices. Previous, you know, previous iteration, that was a classroom.
Yeah. And when we did our classroom counts, we were able to repurpose that space to CTE administration.
Gotcha.
Here.
Which, which works-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. It works well, because this floor is where a lot of the administration is.
Gotcha.
Eric, go back to your last comment about the stairwells. Was that just a comment? You said, "I'll be curious to see."
Well, I mean, I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to see it. I mean, it's, you know.
He's talking about the aesthetics of the stairwell.
When we get to materials and those stuff.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay.
And so everybody knows, Eric is talking about these stairs at the end of the 1926 wing. And for everybody's, I know it's hard sometimes for people to understand where we are. This is where the existing pool sits on Cedar. Then there's also some stairs along the, the north face of the building.
Um, on all three, all three floors, we're moving, we're repositioning the bathrooms. In 72, the bathroom windows were bricked up. In the current plan, we're restoring them to windows. But in the ADA, one of the ADA stalls actually has a window, has lined up with a window. How are we dealing with the, is-
Right now, we were talking about using a, a translucent glass in those windows.
Okay, that was what I was saying.
And, and he's talking about, if you look at the building right now, you'll look at this corner, which is inside the, inside the courtyard. Everybody could see that the brick has been infilled there. That's what Eric's talking about.
Um, and we, previously, we had stairwa, in previous iteration, we had stairwells on the, at the east and west hallway. We've eliminated those. Is there any value in having, I know it's sort of a, a general access to the building. Is there value in still having the second and third floors connected or not? Or is that a structural issue?
We, we looked, it's not a structural issue. We did look at that, and we felt that because of a number of reasons, one being how the building functions, that these stairs and these stairs here are located in good proximity to this corner. So, so there was the ability to remove the stair altogether. We didn't, you know, when we removed the stair from when you enter, there was a level of concern for safety there.
Right, right.
So removing that one was, was really critical in regards to the development of the plan. When we go up, yeah, I guess there could be something there. There wasn't the need for it in regards to any code or anything.
Okay. Well, only, only reason, because at, at present, we have, in that part of the building, we have basically six stairwells. And we would be going from six to four. So that's why I was wondering, the-
Yeah, you are going from six to four, but if, if, when you start to walk this building, you know, it gets a little confusing sometimes. And because of the ability, when you're in these stairwells, you always know that there's the relationship of these two to the auditorium, which everybody knows right now.
Right.
And we know that at the end of these, at the end of these corridors, there would be a stair. And then also, at the end of these corridors, there's also another set of stairs. So we thought that the locations of the stairs were right in regards to the scale of the building.
If you can go to the second floor, I guess the only thing, and I'm not sure if it shows up on here or not, but with, with the removal of the staircase, my question would be, since we're not going to have it as an exposed balcony, not balcony, or balcony, I guess, railing, should we, is there, is there value in sort of squaring that off a little bit more, as opposed to having this very sawtoothed space, just from a, just even a maintenance standpoint? It's, it's a lot of glass they would have to be cleaning.
Yeah, we're, actually, we're, we're in the process of designing this right now.
Okay.
And it includes some glass that, when you're in these corridors, you can see out. You could let, and you could allow natural light to come into the building in non-teaching spaces. So in the public corridors, you're going to be able to see outside.
And one, one of the things I, I'm very, I'd be very curious to see in regards to pretty much all the, we've got all these new classrooms, I'd be curious to see what, how, how we anticipate to see them laid out with furniture. And I, also, because I remember from doing tours on the, on the bond issue, also electrical outlets, because that was a big issue, is that we've been underpowered. So I'd be very curious to see-
In regards to both of those, we have three different layouts that we've been talking to Cleveland Heights High School, as well as the district about.
Okay.
And in the, in the next few months, we're going to start to develop the furniture package, which would include the direction of the classroom, whether their desks, whether their tables, how that's all going to work. In regards to outlets, we also had that discussion. So we are able to, you know, the outlets will be sufficient for the program. When you start to talk about science, it gets to be a little different because of the, the needs for the science. And I, I know that, I've seen-
Well, that was, that was actually going to be my next question, was we have different types, different, different courses have, you know, have different actual physical needs. And my question was going to be, which programs are going in which spaces, because to a degree, that may have an impact in the future, how we want, want to organize the high schools. So I was curious to see, where, where is physics versus biology versus chemistry?
Yeah. Well, there is specifics in regards to science rooms, in regards to science labs.
Okay.
And we have discussed that. And we had developed those spaces in regards to that. And we have basically three different lab types, a general lab, physics, and chemistry. And then, in regards to other spaces, in regards to academic core spaces, these rooms in, that you see this, this sort of bluish color, these rooms are all being set up the same. All right? Because the, the academic core spaces of, of English, of math, of, of language, from our experience, are, are, are very, very similar. So we set those up the same, as well as casework, and these are all the same. If there's something special that's going on, or some, some additional space, or, or additional program needs that the teacher needs in regards to a specific program, or a specific lesson that they're teaching, the building's set up to have what we call project labs.
Right.
And there are four project labs, and they're basically at the ends of the 1926 wings, which are these spaces that we see here. So let's say, who's here? Let's say Nancy and, and the science teacher want to have, and Brian want to have a court class together. So they have, each have 20 kids in there. They could, they could talk to administration about coming together and having a, a group session in, in one of these classrooms. So that's sort of the idea there.
Uh, when you're speaking about casework, in the classrooms that are in the wraps, what is currently an exterior window, they have windows. I'd be cur, I'm curious to see how that is going to be incorporated into the-
We, we, and when we developed the casework, we incorporated the existing openings that are there. Because we, for a number of reasons. One is one of memory, of course, which is always one of the top things on our mind, when, when you work on a school like this. The other one is regard, in regards to economy of building and economy of construction. Because the openings are there, we were able to incorporate the casework into them.
Well, I guess-
And then it relates to the outside windows also.
Is the, the stonework and masonry going to be visible, or is it going to be encased?
Right now, it is going to be, we have it encased right now.
Okay. Um, then, let's see what else I got.
It, it all gets covered. By the time you have your doors coming in, there, there was very little left.
And then that's, I'm in home, I'm, I'm in home stretch.
No, I was asking how much more-
Oh, I'm in the home stretch.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then, again, as far as detail, because before, when we sign off at design development, that's sort of, we're, we're locking in. I'd be curious to see what we're looking at as far as the, where you are from interior design in the main lobby, as well as the east lobby. I know the, from the Archives Committee, or not, the Preservation Committee was very much about door trim, doors and doors trim. I'm curious to see how we're coming up with a contemporary, or I should say, a modern door that has the, the feel of the original design.
If, if you remember, we, we looked at that picture at the pancake breakfast.
Oh, I'm talking the classroom doors.
Oh, the classroom doors?
Yes, yes.
Oh, we were able, we, we're looking at that right now. The classroom door, just so everybody knows, has a little, has a little piece of added trim to the, to the hotamano frame that, that we're looking at. And then there's a certain aesthetic for windows in the existing classroom door.
And then, again, just a couple of small things when we're talking exterior. The, I mentioned, I think we were emailing, in the new construction, where we have the panels, if we were able to add a, perhaps a cornice of some, that give it a-
Yeah, and we're, we're detailing that right now. Because I know that when you look at, especially the renderings when they got printed tonight, the detail's not showing up yet.
Right.
So there's, there's connection details that, that, in regards to the materials, the connection details add a little more ornamentation to the building.
And that was, that was, and that was the same thing in the, in the construction, the wraps. There's a, a small little divot that breaks up the long horizontal bar.
Yeah, the, the wraps has basically a one-foot horizontal, horizontal, I'll call it a, a connection seam. And there's a little bit of a reveal there, so that, so that the building has additional shadows there, much like your brick has shadows at each, each line.
Like, there's a, well, I think there's more like a divot. I don't know if it was supposed to, every, about every classroom or two, there's a, a small break, you know?
Oh, yeah. Every classroom, there's also a vertical.
Right, yeah.
There's a vertical detail that goes on.
Yeah, so-
That adds that, that level of, if we, for those that, that have been coming to the meeting, we talked about repetition-
Right.
-of, of classroom windows, so that when you're in the outside, you always know where the, the classrooms are.
Those are, those are the highlights of my question.
Like a dissertation.
Does, anybody-
I'm paying attention to the blue-
You are. It's great.
Yeah, I mean, several of mine were addressed, actually, by Mr. Solomon, as usually is the case. I wondered if we, what was the final number on the mini auditorium seating?
Right now, we're at about 170.
170?
Yeah. And that's, just so everybody knows, that's really in this space on Cedar.
Anything else, sir?
I would just like to add, first of all, thank you and your team. When I think about, you know, here's a team of people who are trying to preserve the integrity of a design, and really make sure that the building functions for all of our needs, those academic needs, CTE needs, our special ed needs, our arts and our athletics. I really think you've done a nice job, just, just kind of outlining how these spaces relate to one another. And so, and, um, working with our team of teachers and, and others to really listen to the concerns, and making sure, especially with our educational team, making sure that these spaces relate and makes sense. So, thank you. We know we have some continued efforts to go, but thus far-
We'll be, we'll be meeting again.
Yes, but thus far, we're pleased that we'll be seeing. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. It's been enjoyable.
Ron, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't have requested audience, but we have three people who've signed up to make statements from the audience. First, Chrissy Gallagher. And for each of you, if you could come to the podium, say your name. You don't need to say your address. And we'll give you five minutes. We'll give you a fair warning if you've, if you're getting close, and then we will ask you to wrap up.
I only need three and a half. My name is Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher, and I am proud to serve as one of the three co-chairs of Citizens for Our Heights Schools. Protect our Heights schools. That's been our motto since the beginning of this campaign. And as we've drawn closer to Election Day and come under attack with inaccurate, misleading, and unfounded attacks from the opposition, that motto is now truer and more necessary than ever. We must protect our schools from cuts that would dramatically impact classroom instruction. Since the 2000 levy, 2011 levy, our board and administration have done an excellent job at protecting our classrooms. While they've reduced the number of administrators by more than 9%, they've reduced the number of classroom teachers by a mere 1%. But if our district finds itself forced to make $6 million in cuts, there's no way they'll be able to maintain our current class sizes or our current teaching force. We must protect our community and our neighborhoods. Home values are tied to the quality of schools, and people continue to move into Cleveland Heights because they know our schools will give their children a better chance at life. We are a vibrant and unique community, with our own strengths and our own challenges. We have an enormous base of passion and knowledge on all sorts of topics, as you all well know. And we cannot remain a strong community without our strong schools. We must protect the progress we've made, which is most evident in the straight A's our district has earned in the value-added category on the state report card over the last two years. Most people who pay attention to education issues are well aware that standardized test scores, when taken in aggregate, show you much more about the socioeconomic background of students than about the quality of a particular teacher or a particular school. The only measure on the current report card that looks at how well a school district teaches every child, and how well each of those children learn, is value-added. And CHUH scores at the absolute top, tied only with Orange. Our district is doing a better job at educating all of its students than Shaker, Lakewood, Solon, Beechwood, or Hudson. That is remarkable, and definitely worth protecting. We must even protect our administrators. Our chief financial officer, Scott Gaynor, has earned our trust. He has proven that our district is an excellent steward of taxpayer money. Just because someone prints up a number on a piece of paper and sticks it on the windshield of your car does not make it so. The opposition always complains that we make levy campaigns about the kids. But we're talking about public schools. But we're talking about public schools here. Of course, this is about the kids. It's about every child who walks into our buildings, whether they are black or white, rich or poor, whether they've bounced around between five different school districts in three years, or whether there are multi-generations in the Heights, whether they're identified as gifted or living with severe disabilities, whether they are angry and filled with doubt, or eager and filled with hope. Every child is worth our investment. Every child deserves our vote. Please join me tomorrow for standing up for the truth and protecting our Heights schools.
Okay, next, Lou, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's Weinstein or Weinstein. If you could come forward. Okay. Diane Howland.
I wanted to address the content of an item that is on the school district's website, and the comments made by Ms. Gallagher regarding the data that I have presented in my flyers and my postings regarding the financial data of the school district. And that data was pulled directly off of files on the Ohio Department of Education website. I have copied the sections from which I pulled my data and posted them on my website, which is chuhwepaymore.webly.com. A great website, Weebly is great, got to tell you, very good place. But first off, the content on the district's posting, I guess that went up today, talks about number of administrators, and nowhere in my data do I discuss the number of administrators. The data I cite shows the fiscal year 2010 data from the report card, and shows the fiscal 2013 and the fiscal 2014 data, which compares the administrative expenses, the instructional expenses, the student support services expenses, and the staff support expenses. From 2010 through to 2014, student service, student support services were cut by 56%. The amount of money we spent in 2010 is basically, it's 56% higher than what we spend today. And for people who may not know, that's the programs for special needs. It provides social workers and counselors, and it even works with the gifted program, which means parts of the gifted program were cut. The same data shows that the administrative expenses over that same time period increased 52% to the $3,311 per student level it is now, which makes it the fifth highest in the state in how much we spend per student on administration costs. I had requested from Mr. Gaynor, four times, I think it could be even five times, the data to, or not to explain, but to provide me all of the administrative expense data. And I have yet to get it. It's been over a month. So, let's see. And again, all that data comes from the Ohio Department of Education. It's not something I created, I did not make it up. I just repeated it and then raised my questions about it. The other issue that Mr. Gaynor seems very disturbed by is something that I came across because, again, another response, a records request that I put into him...
Ms. Howland, you have about 30 seconds.
Thank you. Was for the salaries of the administrative staff. Again, he never gave it to me. So I pulled off the ODE 2013, 2014 data, which finds that there are at least three administrators who appear to have two job titles, two salaries, and appear to work more than 400 days per year. These things seem implausible. I wanted to get the data to verify this, but I have never received that data.
Okay.
Those are the facts.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we have our second reading and approval of the math curriculum adoption series, grades six through 12.
Can I have a motion to approve adoption of the math curriculum?
Second.
Any questions, comments, additions? This is what was...
Where am I directing my questions?
Yes, Bob's back there, but this is what we discussed at the last meeting.
That was my line.
So there's no, there's no changes or modifications from what we saw in our last reading, correct?
The only changes and modifications will have to do with the budget. We're still waiting for the publisher to finalize numbers and subscription numbers and materials requests, but no, there's no substantial modifications to the proposal.
And we're, we're expecting a design life of how many years from this?
This will be for a six-year adoption and implementation.
And the primary thing would be, I guess, the, after a set period of time, the books are going to start to wear out, correct?
Yes. I think that that's why we kept the six-year cycle going, is that's a normal wear and tear on materials adoption.
Got you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the second, we have a second reading of the NEOLAs policies. And we have Dr. Wiley here, if any of the board members have any questions regarding the policies thus far for the second reading.
I actually have a question. Policy 2413, career advising. Under the, after the opening paragraphs, excuse me, the district's career advising plan shall include, and then item B, with the check mark that says, advisors will meet with students at least once each semester to explore, evaluate, and plan academic and career pathways. And that, it's, it's a little confusing to me. I know you didn't write this, this is a NEOLAs policy, but it's confusing to me that it says, students grade K through 12, and then it said, creating and maintaining a success plan beginning in grade six. Does that checked area refer to only students grade six and later, first of all? I can't imagine that we're going to be meeting with elementary students every semester on a career plan, nor should we.
Board President Pepler, that comes from curriculum and instruction, but at the last, under part B, it talks about maintaining students' success plans beginning in grade six, so...
That, so the semester beginning at grade six, okay. But how, how, how difficult is that going to be in terms of our staffing? And, and who do you envision carrying that, those activities out with students at both the middle school and the, and the high school level?
I could speak on what I would envision, who would do that, but I would probably defer that to curriculum and instruction, or Dr. Celico's department, to discuss who would do that.
I'd like to hear at our, at our third reading, then, before adoption. I'd like to hear some thoughts on that.
And this is a new, and also to note that this is a new policy that they put in.
Right, right, I understand.
Yeah. And if I would add, I think this new policy is added based on the push that the, that they have now with this college readiness, and making sure that our students are, receive some advisement about careers as early as fourth grade. So that whole push, and I think that you're right, we'll give some more information about that for the next one.
Can I ask another question? Are you done with your part of that?
Yes.
Just on that one, I have nothing else. Did I miss something? It, it seems like this policy, it talks about the training of employees, but it specifically how it goes with the, how it relates to Ohio Means Jobs, K through 12. Is there, the policy doesn't really address the, and it may not be part of policy, it may just be part of guidelines, but if we're going to put this policy in place, I think it's going to be extremely important to be sure that our employees know how to deliver it. So I don't know that it belongs in policy, but I just want to sort of make that statement.
It'll be a shift.
Yeah, it'll be a shift, that's, that's a good way to think of it. That's all I have.
But, but we're required to address this in, in a policy.
Yes.
It's, right, by the, by the state.
Right, but, but you're right, Cal, when you stated the administrative guidelines will kind of guide how it would be actualized for our district.
Good, good.
Any other questions or comments on these policies? So we don't take action at the second reading, but, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the third item is approval of the resolution authorizing continued membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2015-16 school year.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Okay, and the last item is approval of the field trip, Monticello Middle School Power of the Pen Team, State Power of the Pen Competition Field Trip in Worcester, Ohio, May 21st through 22nd. So, as you recall, our students won regionals, so they're advancing to state, so...
They did great.
Yes, yes. So this is to approve that expense.
Any questions or comments?
Good luck with them.
Other than here, here, yeah, he feels great. Mr. Gaynor?
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Oh, I thought I got that, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Anything else, Dr. Dixon?
No, I just want to remind everyone that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so if you have an opportunity, just tell a teacher how much you appreciate his or her work in our school district. So that would be all for my report.
All right, moving on to personnel. I can take a motion to approve item, items F1 through 7 together.
Second.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Moving on to business services. I, we have, most of the items under business services are regarding the leases at Coventry School, and Mr. Peck, if you could come up and just give us a little overview on this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, sure I can. Good evening. In an effort to try to streamline and control our leasing of Coventry Elementary School, we were advised by our new attorney that we should update all the leases, which have, some of them have fell out of a renewal. So we're, and what we're attempting to do with your approval tonight is get everyone in the facility under a lease that starts July 1st. We're starting it a month early because you're taking action tonight. And they would be on a reoccurring one-year cycle that would expire June 30th. Easier for us to manage, and just try to stay on top of them.
Thank you.
Now, what's, is new, and I, I don't know if you noticed, but we are adding Family Connections and Heights High School Alumni Foundation into the leases, because they haven't been on one prior to this cycle.
Okay. I think I can take items, a motion to approve items G1 through 3 first. Let's do that. Can I have a motion to approve items G1 through 3?
Second.
Any questions or comments on these agreements?
I would just, I think aligning the leases is a great idea. I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Can I have a motion now for item G4, please? The lease agreement between the Board of Ed and Reaching Heights and Future Heights.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just to make the comment, I'm the board liaison to Reaching Heights, but I'm listed as the trustee on the website, so I will recuse myself of this role.
Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Recuse.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Item G5 for Lake Erie, Inc., can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes. Item G6, the lease agreement between the Board of Ed and the Alumni Foundation. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. I mean, move. Motion.
Second, you're a second, okay.
I'll be doing the same as Cal's last time, I'm staying on this one.
And I'll be doing it again, because we're both...
We're both on it.
Both on the board, okay. So, Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Silverman?
I'm staying.
I'm sorry, I started right off with that, I was going to, not calling that time. Mr. Zucker, I'm staying. Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Just one more lease agreement, it's between the board and the Heights Waldorf School. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
And our last item under business services is, need a motion to accept the four donations listed in item 8, A through D.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we're moving...
So we're moving on to finance. Mr. Gainer.
You can take that. A motion for...
I can, okay. So can I have a motion to approve, we're going to discuss, obviously, but item H, items H1 through 4?
Second.
Okay. So we have our monthly financial reports, number one. Number two, we have two confirming purchase orders. Again, that's an audit requirement. And there were some questions, or there was a question about specifically one of the purchase orders for Carrington Youth Academy as a core place student, and that was tuition that we were required to pay for that core place student. Approval of tax rate resolution. We do that on an annual basis. That's simply a requirement from the county. And then we have approval of our five-year forecast. And what I want to say about that is that it's not substantially different from the one we did in October because at this point in time, we don't know much more than we did then. Now, if this were Wednesday, we would know a little more in terms of what's going to happen tomorrow in the election. We don't know what's going to happen with the next biennial budget yet. So we can't really, you know, we've seen a couple of different versions. We see that, or we're hopeful that we'll get to keep our guarantee, but we also see that the Ed Choice and some other scholarship opportunities are expanding. So we're not sure how that will all play out. So there's no new assumption in the five-year forecast on the biennial budget yet. I do want to point out one thing that has been, you know, tossed around in the whole Ohio Department of Education data conversation. And that is, I just want to remind everyone, if you look at the five-year forecast at the bottom half on expenditures, if you look on 2014, well, actually, look 13, 14, 15, under the salaries and wages line item, you see 60 million, a dip to 54 million, and then back up to 60 million. So again, as we've discussed before, and this is a point that seems to be lost in the levy conversation with some of our opponents because they want to assert that we are diverting money away from the classroom and into other areas. The teachers elected during the last round of negotiations to be paid over 12 months instead of 10. So traditionally, in 2012, 13, for example, if a teacher earned $50,000 a year, they came in in September, and by June of that year, they earned their $50,000. In 13, 14, they asked to be paid over 12 months. So that $50,000 was paid from when they come in September, but we actually divided it over 12 months. So it actually runs through the summer and past the end of the fiscal year. So we moved four pays out of that fiscal year for every teacher in the district into the next fiscal year.
Which is why we took the dip in instructional...
That's the dip in instructional expenses.
In 2014.
Correct. And the dip in salaries. And so you see that here, and we've talked about that. So I, you know, I always caution people when they want to mine data, particularly from a source that they're not familiar with, that there's always a story behind the data. And oftentimes, people want to tell a particular story based on assumptions. But if they ask the questions, we're happy to provide the explanation. Or if people are here at meetings, we've talked about this many times. You know, and this was during the course of negotiations. And this assumption has been in the five-year forecast for a while now.
Well, and in fact, it helped us push...
Helped us push...
The request off another year.
Correct. That, in addition to the staff savings we received from Wiley when that building was closed, there were some staff reductions there, again, helped us delay the levy to a fourth year, which, you know, for one that was intended to last three years. So those are some of the things that, there's generally a story behind the numbers. And there's a true story, and there's, you know, a not a true story. So that's the story with why the instructional expenditure dipped in 13, 14. And that's the base year that a lot of these analyses are using. They're looking at 2010 versus 2014 and saying, wow, you're spending a lot less money on instruction than you were back then. And that's why. It's really the same amount of teachers nearly, but just four pays move out of that year. Any other questions I can ask in answer about the five-year forecast? Like I say, we, I think what I want to do is bring this back to the board. You're statutorily required...
For September.
Yeah. You're statutorily required to do it in September and May. So that's why you see it now, even though this isn't the optimal time. So once we close the fiscal year, have the budget in place and conversation with the board for next year, then we'll bring this back, and we'll know the biennial budget. We'll know what our tax collections were. We'll know what, what any of the other unknowns at this point are and the levy, and we'll be able to put that in the forecast and see a little better picture of things then.
Any questions, comments, additions? Mr. Gainer.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Koval.
Yes.
All right. On to the board president's report. I guess I just want to say that I'm really always pleased when we have the kind of meeting that we had tonight. To hear about your engagement in particular, Dr. Dixon, with our students is a wonderful thing. To see the teachers here smiling as they came forward and knowing that it's toward the end of a long year when people could be very, very just ready to move on. I'm sure that they are still, you know, at some level. But it's really nice to be part of this kind of a meeting. And I think, I sense a lot of really positive, exciting things from the students, too. You know, all of this, you talked about the power of the pen, the watching friends basically live tweeting the results at the robotics competition. We won third place out of 37 teams throughout northeast Ohio for the high school robotics competition. That was just so fun. Being at the musical performances and looking forward to those in the future through the end of the year. It's just a very exciting, positive time, I think. But I also know that we're looking forward to the summer for a couple of reasons. And one is the groundbreaking on the high school renovations. And we're having a special event here on May 12 at 6 o'clock. And I hope everybody can join us. But the less fun and exciting, but really more important piece of business over the summer, we'll be getting moving on the strategic plan. And I look forward to our meeting on the 19th. Did I get that date right this time? The 19th work session, where we'll hear from the Strategic Planning Committee about all of the good work that they've done. So I'm hopeful, and I'm proud to be a Tiger.
Good.
So, any unfinished business? Nope. New business? Board committee reports? Wow.
Now I'm on. From the Alumni Foundation, they held their pancake breakfast on April 19. Had over, well over 500 people attend. It was very popular. A lot of people came to see the high school before the construction. It was Dr. Dixon's first pancake breakfast. So she was received warmly. The foundation held the Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame, the 35th last week at Lander Haven. Again, it was the first for Mr. Ross and the superintendent. Positive feedback, real good crowd, a lot of really excellent speakers as well. So that worked out really well. The next Heights Gear Sale, which we just signed the lease on, or approved the lease, is May 30 at Coventry from 9:30 to noon. And then coming up is senior awards. The Alumni Foundation is on track to award over, around $35,000 in scholarships this year. And one of the things that was, because I'm often at the intersection of different sets of data, I'd asked the superintendent to have staff run information on our student population. Only, less than half of our seniors started with us in kindergarten. And what was one of the interesting things I saw in some of the applications, so I had the foundation run the data, is that the overwhelming majority of those who apply for one of our scholarships, it's the inverse. They're probably, because you see the applications, there are so many of them started with us at different, are elementary. So it was very interesting to see that. The other thing that was very surprising was 80% of this year's applicants, we have 17 scholarships, 80% were women, which I was very surprised by. So we got to see the guys start applying for some scholarships. Last, there was a facilities accountability committee meeting. At that one, from the different, some of the committee chairmen weren't there. Jim Cool was filling in because he has been ill. At that meeting, with the one area that's sort of pulled out was about the solar array. The two steves aren't here. There's a lot of interest in that. The issue the district has to face is because the way it would work would be sort of, they're trying to get legal positions on it because it's something very new and innovative. But it also would be, like with the lease, you're leasing your roof space for 10, 20, 30 years. So they're trying to get specifics as far as the, how do you go about it as an RFP process? Do you make, or can you just select somebody? So there was a lot of interest on that. Two of my colleagues were there as well. So this is really more for that end of the table, I guess. There was some concern that I wasn't conveying all of the information that was presented. We had one gentleman who, in the public comment component, was commenting on the ability to do, perhaps, remember the architects, when we looked at sustainability, one of the items was what they called gray water. Reusing water from runoff to, for non-consumption uses. Bathrooms, basically. And that was, it was advocating for that. Another gentleman was advocating in regards to square footage for CTE. As far as that, again, that was, it's a concern that's been raised previously in regards to the amount of square footage allocated for specific programs. So that was from the fact meeting. And then the only other thing that I, I'm going to, because I got the time. The, I'm disappointed that Ms. Hallam left this evening because I was going to ask her, when she was going to answer my question, that she's been opposed to us. And I'm just going to say that it's, I had a roommate in college